We would like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Welcome everyone here. We'll go ahead this evening and start with the Pledge of Legions and Councilor Garvin will lead us in that.
(Pledge of Legions) To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. This is the time in the meeting where we have an invitation to citizens for public comment. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a topic that is already on the agenda, a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter subject for a public hearing at some future date. We're going to take comments this evening, three minutes each, so if you can be concise, we have a few that have signed up for our public comment card. We're aware that this evening we are going to be, Resolution 201766 is initiating the process of starting a time, date for a public hearing to vacate a portion of Southeast Edmondson Street. And we know that there may be a few people that would like to talk to us this evening about that. Again, we can do that in this public comment section because we've not set a public hearing yet. And so know that whatever you would say tonight is not going to be held over for the public comment section or the public hearing, so you'd need to come back to have your comments a part of the record during the public hearing if we move forward with that. Okay? Well, you can tonight. We'll give you the opportunity to share comments for three minutes each and then we'll have that opportunity later tonight to go over that resolution. So I've got, first is Tim Cross. Tim, if you'd come up and identify yourself, if you, Tim, if you want to. And Tim, just sit up and pull the microphone towards you.
Is it possible to insert a... Or no?
He's got some pictures, I'm guessing.
Three minutes.
Again, we will hold you primarily to the three minutes tonight so that we can get through this portion.
Is it possible to insert a...
Yeah, we've got...
Where are you advancing?
Let's get it up here. And then you can just press this button.
This one? My name's Tim Cross. I live in McMinnville. I would like to speak about, explain the situation and speak about that resolution. On the image above, you can see...
Mike, a little closer to you, Tim.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
You can see the residences involved. On the upper right is the Mayhews. On the lower right is Anderson. Cross on the left from Anderson is Rodriguez. And to the, above that is the Cross residence and to the very top on the left is the Mackey residence. The area of concern is shown approximately in the yellow outline. As you can see from these images, there is a line of trees that divides these two properties. And we have been maintaining these trees over the last years because these trees give us a visual screening from the, from the road and the houses down the hill below us. If you look at that picture, you can see the, directly across from us, the Anderson house. It's behind that screen wall made by the vegetation. So we have a topography which is shown here showing the residences. And you can see the upper part below the dividing line of these properties. The upper part of the slope is a gentle gradient and then as it approaches the Anderson house, it becomes steep and that's where the old Cozine Creek, its cut bank. And then you have the Anderson house built down in the river bottom, again where it's flat. There you can see the Anderson house sitting on the river bottom and the upper story is approximately more or less eye level. You can see the ground is very flat in front of us, so it's basically an extension of the farmland that used to occupy this area. In another picture, you can see how flat it is as you go across the city land until you come to the edge of the Anderson property and then it descends rapidly and forms the flood plain. The trees, the fir trees and the oak trees overhang our property and overhang our roof. And we have been pruning these trees over the years, over the last three or four years just because to make sure that we are protecting our roof from leaf litter and falling limbs. You can see how they overhang our property. Here is a image of a tree that sits on, a fir tree that sits on city property. And that fir tree has been pruned. The one behind it sits in front of the Anderson and the Mayhew properties. And you can see that they have not been trimmed. Looking out across the, down toward Edmund Street, Edmondson Street, you can see that there's a reason why we would like to keep our privacy in a vegetation screening. One other thing I would like to point out is that we normally walk from our property down Edmondson Street, which is the street that goes to the, to the east immediately in front of our property. If that property were vacated and we would lose the right of way, we would have to walk the yellow line, which is about a little over a third of a mile extra to go to town or to the library or to a grocery store.
Tim, 15 more seconds.
And so I would like to conclude that we don't perceive that Mr. Anderson has really shown any injury that needs to be remedied by a vacation. And so it seems like vacation of that disputed property does not even garner any, any public use or, or convenience or any aesthetic sensibility. We think that if it were vacated, we would incur considerable immediate and significant damage directly because of the, the loss of the ability to maintain that, that forested natural area. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Margaret Cross.
Thank you very much.
As you might surmise, I'm married to him. So same address, 1102 Southwest Russ Lane, and I thank you for the opportunity to appear. I'll try not to cover the same ground. Tim's pretty much talked about the importance of that privacy screen, but I would also like to note that when our house was built in 2003, before the Anderson house went in, the architect and the owner at that time, the Bombers, designed that house so it would all orient to the back, so it would have a very natural craftsman style setting, be very private, so it would back up at the end of a cul-de-sac onto another dead end. And those screens are really, that, that tree line is absolutely integral to the design and the architecture and the livability of our house. All our rooms across the back have windows. That's where we live, we eat, the kitchen, the bedroom, everything, all looks out on that screen of trees. It's integral to our house. And the value will be seriously diminished if we look out at a wall or a fence. Before we bought, and several times after we bought, we were assured by planning and zoning, that a vacation could not take place without two-thirds of the adjacent owners agreeing to a vacation of that right of way. We relied on that vacation, or that assurance, before we invested a lot of time and money in improving our house and in taking care of that strip of trees back there. If planning and zoning knew that there was something special about this property, I think they had an obligation to tell us. And they didn't. We asked many times. They told us the same thing, every time. Now, I know the statute changed in 2015, allowing the City Council to disregard that two-thirds requirement. But we were there, the house was built long before, in 2006, the council considered the neighbors' objections. I think it should be relevant now as it was then. The right of way serves a definite public good. As Tim pointed out, it gives us that shortened walk. We don't have to go on the busy streets. We, it's quiet, it provides a wildlife habitat back there, not only just for our enjoyment, but for the public good. We invite our neighbors and friends to go through past our house and down that road if they want to enjoy that right of way. We'll miss that if we don't have that. And with all due respect, I want to bring up something that I find very sensitive. And bear with me, and I only mean it with the greatest respect. The process has to us seemed very intimidating. It's entirely appropriate that I could go or Mr. Anderson could go, any citizen could go, down to a city office and talk to a public employee for advice or opinion or information about a matter. But Mr. Anderson showed up at our house with Mr. Jeffries. We didn't know Mr. Jeffries was coming and he did say, he gave a little disclosure that he's related by marriage, I believe, is that correct, to Mr. Anderson? But then we were told that this was, we should just sign these papers, this was the way to go, he was doing us a favor if he was going to give us 10 feet. And so that was very off putting. And then, when we went through a mediation process, halfway through it, again, without any knowledge or invitation from us, Mr. Koch and Mr. Bissett show up and we thought we were talking in a mediation situation with our neighbors. And suddenly, we're feeling very intimidated, like this is a done deal and we should just shut up and go away. That was maybe a perception on our part that was not fair, but that's what it felt like. And I hate to bring this up, but I think it needs to be brought up because this isn't how it should work. We should all be on sort of a level playing field here. So I don't know who initiated the presence of the attorney and the engineer at this mediation. I assume that Mr. Anderson invited Mr. Jeffries, but we're just having this sprung on us. So I hate to bring it up because I do respect the city government and I respect the hard work of the city employees. But I think you need to know that this didn't feel very good. And I know it went over, so I apologize. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Margaret, for your testimony. Jose Rodriguez?
Good evening, I'm Jose Rodriguez. I reside at 1116 Southwest Russ Lane here in McMinnville. I am here, my wife and I recently moved to McMinnville, four years ago. We looked for about a year and a half to find a home. We didn't think we were able to find anything. We actually started looking out of the area. My wife is administrator here at Lynnfield and so we feel somewhat stay committed to the community. When we bought the home, well, first of all, we couldn't find anything. When we came across this property, we did realize that it was beautiful and it would be perfect. At that time, it was also disclosed to us that the house had been through this situation once before and that the City Council rejected the motion to vacate the property, which was instrumental in us buying that property. Being said, we have now invested money into maintaining our home, upgrading our home. And now with this situation, we feel that we're going to be devalued because we don't know really what Mr. Anderson's intentions are because that's never been disclosed to us. From the very beginning, this has been a very disingenuine situation for me personally. I myself have committed myself to the city of McMinnville. I sit on two nonprofits. I sit on the Board of St. Vincent de Paul. I also sit on the Amhill Enrichment Society. I also volunteer two days a week at a church that's not my affiliation to help this community. I have fallen in love with the community. But this whole process has been a little bit distasteful and I would like the City Council to consider going through the normal process and upholding the prior decision as I feel that my wife and myself, my neighbors and the rest of my neighborhood will be impacted should you decide to vacate this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose.
Mary Ann? Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Rodriguez. I live at, my husband and I live at 1116 Southwest Russ Lane here in McMinnville. I would like to express my opposition to the resolution that's going to be before you tonight, Resolution 201766, which allows the process to vacate the property on Southwest Edmondson Street to go forward without the normal two-thirds support of the neighbors. My husband and I have the adjacent property in question. We think that we will suffer a substantial loss of value to our home if the City Council approves this motion. Our home is at the end of the cul-de-sac and because, and we have, as Tim pointed out, there are, right on our side of the property, there are four 70-foot fir trees and an oak tree. Beautiful landscape, absolutely gorgeous. We purchased the home because of that natural beauty setting. And we're, you know, we're close to downtown McMinnville, close to Lynnfield College where I work, so it was a perfect opportunity to live there. Since the material in the City Council package did not include what the proposed use was going to be that Mr. Anderson was proposing, it's hard to know exactly what the plan is for that property. Knowing that any potential use could cause concern for my husband and I. If he decides to build a large structure, a driveway, something like that coming across the back of our property, will actually, will devalue the property, our property values. So I think that that's something that the City Council should consider considering that according to 2015, it becomes your responsibility to have damages assessed as that part of the, the process, or you had to find how to, how to mitigate for those damages. As, as my husband said, we were guaranteed by the city planning department, prior owners, our real estate agent, that that vacant property had been, would not be able to be vacated without the consent of two-thirds of the property owners. That process is not being followed by the statute. Since the, actually, of course, you all have the right to begin the process of vacationing that, that piece of property. I think looking back, it's, it's a change in your past practice. You haven't done this before, you're doing it now. It's a top-down approach rather than trying to have the neighbors work together and come up with a solution that will work for everyone. I think that if, if you go forward with this, it's a different kind of a field to the government that we have here in McMinnville. And I always appreciated the community-based living here. It's a community. We all live together and when you impose something on us, it is a different kind of a feeling. And I think that that's a decision that you guys are going to have to make tonight, the way in which you're going to govern us. And I think that it's going to be a call, it's your, your decision, you have full, you have the full authority to do what you're going to do tonight. But I think you need to really consider how it actually impacts us as a community which you all serve. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we have Jan Iverson.
I'm Jan Iverson and I live in the gated community, so I may be an odd person to testify about restricted access. There are two issues that I see when I heard about that possible change. One is, of course, we love our little rabbit hole. It just is so nice to be able to walk downtown, to go to the grocery store, to the library. We're all walkers in our community and we really like the ability to cut off that big ugly walk around on busy streets. But I think more important for us is, Russ Lane is very intimate to Forest Glen and we like the cooperation that both neighborhoods have worked out with each other. We give them the gate code, don't tell anybody, and they give us the rabbit hole. And so we have a, the community kind of expands and it's, it's more gentle, it's more inclusive, and it's, it's just a delightful aspect of a town like McMinnville. So we would not want our little shortcut and our, and the beauty of walking back there to be truncated and we would also like to continue this nice relationships, which we would do anyway because we still do barbecues and things like that. But we might cut off their gate code if we couldn't have their rabbit hole. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Any other comments during the public session? Okay, Richard, if you'd like to come up. We're limiting this to three minutes, Richard, and this is the public comment section.
All right.
If you could state your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Richard Anderson and I live at 960 Southwest Edmondson Street and I am the one who requested the city to consider this. First of all, the history. Back in 1888 and 1890, during the plating of my subdivision, some land was turned over to city control for consideration as to whether they would want to use it for a street. As things are now, because of the neighbors and other property, there is no possibility of actually using that as a street. And so I am asking the city to recognize that and when they do, there's a sequence of operations under the law and it will be attached to the subdivisions that it came from and the abutting property, which includes my property. As for what I will use it for, the main difference they will see is I will be removing weeds and blackberries and things like that. I have been, been doing that. As for the path, the first time I met Mrs. Cross, she asked about going over my property for a shortcut and I said, of course. And through this whole thing, I have, I have always agreed there will be a public path going through there. Although I would like to know, right now, if I, if I have a public path there, it ends at their property. Are they willing to let the public freely go between Edmondson Street and Russ Lane? In any case, there will not be any motor vehicle access there. There is a high bank and there's no way to get a car up there once this division is made. The section which now has a road will not be attaching to my property, that will be to the neighbors. And we'll have a path right between, it will be maintained, I'll be putting in more native plants. And I, I think all of their worries that they've expressed are unfounded and, well, if you have any questions as we go forward, I would be glad to answer those.
Can I ask him a question?
This is his comment.
Okay, but I just wondered if you could hit on the point though about the, the bank by your garage?
Yes. The bank now encroaches on my driveway and as the material sloughs off during the winter, it kind of comes over. So it's an unstable situation and I would be stabilizing that bank. I've hired an engineer to engineer a retaining wall and that, that can be done.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Okay, do we have any other citizens that would like to make a public comment this evening? Go ahead.
I tried to be gracious when I spoke the first time and I didn't want to mention Mr. Jeffries, but this is exactly what's happened in the past. Mr. Jeffries has a personal relationship with Mr. Anderson and I need to make public known that I wish him to recuse himself from a vote as well as any input towards a decision to this. This is what I'm disappointed with. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, we're, we're done with our public testimony now. We're done with our public testimony right now. Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public comment section. This evening, we have a presentation by Mid Willamette Valley Councils of Government and what we're going to do is, Councilor Jeffries is on the board of the COG and so, Kevin, if you'd introduce our guests this evening?
There are, oh, a lot of them here today. Yes, so we have, with us today, we have Sean O'Day, the Executive Director of the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, and Renata...
Wakely.
Wakely. I always, I'm going to say I messed it up. I got it right that time. Renata Wakely and she is the head of planning, are you not, now?
And Community Development Director.
Community Development Director for the COG. And Sean, you joined us in May, did you not?
I did, indeed.
Yeah, and he came over, he's got a long history of work in the Mid Willamette Valley. He basically, every administrative position in the city of Salem, he held. So he's, it's just a real pleasure to have him there leading the COG and you want to introduce your staff behind you as well?
I would be happy to, mayor, member of the council again. I'm Sean O'Day, Executive Director of the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. With me tonight is Renata Wakely, who's our Community Development Director. Mike Jaffe, who is our Transportation Program Director, wanted to be with us tonight, but unfortunately was not able to. And so he sent two of, two of his staff, who will be joining me up here in a little bit to talk about what they do, specifically Karen Olden- me up here in a little bit, to talk about what they do, specifically Karen Oldenthal and Kim Sapnar will be talking a little bit more about our transportation programs tonight.
Thank you, Sean. If you'd go ahead with your presentation. Again, just to set the framework, is that, Council, remember, Sean helped us as we prepared Jeff's six-month employment review, and we were so impressed that we just felt it might be appropriate, as we are members of the COG, to have Sean come out and review the, what membership brings, and what expertises they have. And so I think that's kind of what started this process. So again, Sean and group, thank you for coming and spending your evening with us, but we just felt a need to connect and really understand our membership and what it brings, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having us, and thank you for letting us tell our story and describe a little bit more about what a Council of Governments is, what it means for this community, and what it means for the region. As Councilor Jeffries said, I'm relatively new in this role in the COG. I've been with the COG now since May of this year. Prior to that, I was the General Counsel of the League of Oregon Cities, and before that, I was with an agency that was also a member of the COG. I was with the city of Salem, where for, I worked for the city for about eight years, four years in city management, and then four years in the city attorney's office. And I've worked in and around local governments for about 20 years. My career began with the state of Washington, working initially for the Washington State Department of Transportation, so I have some affinity for our transportation program and what our staff does in that area, and then went to work for the Association of Washington Cities, which is a membership-based organization, much like the League, and that's what the law, what the COG is, is a membership-based organization. So let me first thank all of you for being a member of the COG and participating in the programs that we, that we have. Here's an agenda of what we're going to talk about tonight. Specifically, I'll talk about what is a Council of Governments, how is it funded, what programs and services do we provide, and then at the end of today's presentation, I'm going to be seeking feedback from all of you. When I came into this role as the Executive Director, after spending about 30 days with my predecessor and getting as much information as I could from her on the operations of the organization, I then hit the road and went out and met with key leaders throughout the region, and asked them all three, the same three questions, which were, what do you think we're doing well as a Council of Governments? Where can we improve? And what new services should we look to be providing our members? And so tonight, I would like to conclude with that question for all of you, which is, in addition to what you hear tonight, if there's something else that you think your COG should be providing to make your membership more relevant, I'd like to open up that discussion tonight. So what is a Council of Governments? Well, interestingly enough, Oregon was one of the first states to create a Council of Governments. The first one was Lane County Council of Governments, which was initially created to provide fire service for local governments within that community. We weren't too far behind. Our Council of Governments was formed in 1957 as a regional planning agency, and as you will hear from Renata here in a few moments, planning still remains a core service that we provide. We are created by an intergovernmental agreement by all of the participating jurisdictions, and my next slide here is going to show you who your fellow members are in the COG. But what this means is that we are basically an extension of you. We are a consolidated department of all the governments that have chosen to come together and form the COG. We are a public agency. All the employees of the COG are public employees, and we are subject to the same public records, ethics, public meetings, laws that our members are. And by that agreement, as we'll talk a little bit more about our finances, the way that we operate is that all of these governments come together collectively to form the COG, to set out its mission, the programs and services it's going to provide, and then equally share, or at least proportionately share, based on population, in the operations of the COG. Today, our primary services are community development, which, again, Renata will talk a little bit more in depth about the services we provide in that area. We have transportation and GIS, and again, Karen and Kim will be covering that. We also provide, a lot of people are surprised to learn, that we operate a business lending program, and I'll talk a little bit more about what's involved with that. And then finally, we have a host of member services that we offer for our members. Our membership, as I said, is made up of all three counties, Marion County, Polk County, Yamhill County, and the cities contained therein. We are also unique in that we are one of the few councils of governments in the United States that has a tribal government as a member, with the confederated tribes of the Grand Ron. And we have several special districts that also participate in our Council of Governments, including the Chahalem Park and Recreation District, Chmecata Community College, the Salem Kaiser School District, the Salem Kaiser Transit District, and finally, the Willamette Education Service District, which is another entity that looks a little bit like what we do in some of our member services for cities and counties, the Willamette ESD does for school districts throughout the region. And so it's nice to have them as a partner in our council. A lot of times, people will ask me, when I was doing my tour, a common question is, how are you funded, and where do the, where do the dollars go? This slide, it looks like we might have a little bit of an error up there, but that's okay. The block that looks like it's missing, that smallest sliver there, represents the membership dues of all of our participating governments. It represents about 3% of our overall operating budget. A lot of people are surprised to hear that. The basic way in which we're funded is that your membership dues go to keep the lights on, to pay for overhead, to take care of the admin staff, the finance staff, a little bit of my time. And then the rest of our staff are primarily funded by fee-for-service. So we have the support staff, supporting them to be able to go out and provide direct services to our members on a fee-for-service basis. You can see that that's about 27% of our revenue, that local revenue is our fee-for-service revenue. In addition, we receive revenues from the state and federal government for our transportation planning program, which, again, Karen and Kim will talk a little bit more in depth as to how those monies are spent and what those transportation programs look like. We have a set of undesignated reserves, which is essentially our reserve and beginning working capital for our operating budget. And then finally, we have this category, very large category up there, of reserves that are designated. That is essentially our business lending program. Kind of looking at this a little bit different, as to how we allocate those dollars that come in, 40% again sits in the designated reserves category. We have our undesignated reserves, where we budget for next year's beginning working, beginning working capital, as well as our reserves, contingency reserves. You can see that we operate about 12% in the form of grants and loans directly that flow through our budget that go to others, and I'll talk a little bit more about where those come from when I get to the business lending part of tonight's presentation. Materials and services, we need to be able to fund the operations, it's at 11% capital outlay, really is non-existent. We rent the building that we're in, we don't own any real capital assets. And then finally, 33% in the form of personal services, which is the staff of the COG that really do the laboring work. And to look at how we divide that work, you can see here that our member services consist of about 8% of our overall effort. Administrative services, keeping the shop running runs at about 6%. And if you're wondering, well, how does that work if 3% of our membership dues, if 3% of our revenue is membership dues, and that goes to pay for administration, where does the other 3% come from? Well, it comes from a cost sharing with the other fee-for-service programs, as well as those federal transportation programs. We're able to assess an administrative fee so that the members aren't picking up 100% of the administrative costs, and those fee-for-service programs are picking up the other half. Community development is roughly about 7% of our overall operating budget. Transportation planning, you can see, is 25%. And business lending services, which, again, most people are surprised to learn that that's what we do, is over 50% of our overall effort as a COG. So with that brief walkthrough of what we are, how we're funded, and where we spend the money currently, we're going to spend a little bit more time here tonight talking about specific programs that we deliver in each one of those major program areas, starting with community and economic development, and I'll turn it over to Renata to tell you more about that.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Renata Wakely, I'm the Community Development Director. We have a staff of three planners, a grant administrator, which makes up community services. So along with being a portion of the Council of Governments, we also serve and represent the region as the Economic Development District. Economic Development Districts are federally mandated to exist nationwide. The state of Oregon is completely covered by, we're one of 11 economic development districts. And our role as an EDD is to coordinate economic development efforts and represent our region, both statewide and for the federal government. And we do so through a five-year plan called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, or SEDs for short. With completion of a five-year SEDs, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, we also submit an annual planning grant to the EDA for funding, which helps support our community development services and our economic development services. We're governed by a 29-member policy board called the Partnership Board. We have representatives from Yamhill County, Yamhill County Commissioners, so Commissioner Primisich currently serves. We have McMinnville represented by Councilor Jeffries. Mayor Oriet from Carlton represents the small cities of Yamhill County. And then we have various business interests represented for balance, and then various local governments have appointing authority for those business interests. Our next Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is actually set to initiate the next planning effort, the later part of this year and early part of next year, so we'll be calling on our Partnership Board more for that. As the Economic Development District, we receive funding to assist, kind of support our services, but we also are a direct line to various federal funding agencies. So the EDA was, and the Department of Commerce were a funder of what we called the Macon-Willamette Valley Grant. And as the Economic Development District, we were able to apply for that grant and bring additional funds into our region that supported other local economic development agencies, but also brought in a consultant to look at the food and beverage and manufacturing industries, to see if they could identify barriers and rooms and opportunities for growth. And I'm happy to share copies of those reports for those that are interested. And in addition to the application to the EDA, we also provide letters of support for economic development administration applications. So while we have yet to identify something in the past couple of years in this region, we are assisting other communities to identify EDA funds related to job creation, so I'm happy to discuss that in further detail with interested parties. So that's the Economic Development District. As COG, we also provide land use planning services. As Sean mentioned, currently, for Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, we provide planning services to 21 cities in the region. In Yamhill County, those, there's four, we provide direct planning services to Dayton, Lafayette, Sheridan, and Wallamina. We also provide some long-range planning and economic development planning assistance. So recently, we helped the city of Amity with their economic opportunities analysis. During a staff transition between Newburgh, who provides services to Dundee, we filled in, until they were able to hire their own staff. And we recently helped the city of Dundee with a new urban renewal plan for them. We also provide grant application assistance and administration. So tapping into those state and federal funds, we will assist communities with writing those applications, and with those applications come environmental reviews, which we can help with, grant administration reporting requirements, and we also provide assistance with wage monitoring. That comes with safe drinking water funding and community development block grant funds. So we really try to assist our communities from beginning to end of tapping into grant sources to make sure that the projects are able to come to fruition. For Marion County, we provide some housing rehabilitation services. In your region, you have Yamhill County Housing Authority, but we do try to meet on a regular basis to make sure that we are communicating and discussing those regional efforts where we can support each other when it comes to housing needs. And other kind of grant administration assistance, I mentioned environmental reviews and tapping into water sources. We've assisted the city of Amity with a $2.7 million community development block grant project. We are currently working in the city of Carlton, assisting on wage monitoring. Other communities who, you know, needed some assistance with transition, we're really there for what those needs are and how we can help if we have the professional capacity. So with that, I'll turn it over back to Karen?
I think so.
Okay.
So good evening, my name is Karen Oldenthal, and I'm a senior transportation planner at the COG. So at the COG, we provide transportation planning services for the Salem-Kaiser area transportation study, which is called SCATS, and that is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Salem-Kaiser urban area. Metropolitan Planning Organization, known as an MPO, is a federally mandated area for transport, for planning in any urban area over 50,000 population. Right now, there are about, there are 10 MPOs in Oregon. The MPO is actually directed by a policy committee, which is comprised of elected officials of all the jurisdictions that are inside the MPO area. We provide day-to-day services for, to man the MPO. We coordinate with all the local jurisdictions to do a 20-year regional transportation plan, and we develop a four-year transportation improvement program that, the MPO receives federal funds, about $6.5 million worth of federal funds to be used for transportation projects every year. We manage that program. We have a grant program where we select projects to be funded through those. We collaborate on all of the planning, transportation planning projects in the region. We provide technical analysis, certain things. We have a transportation model that we have developed and maintain, traffic counting program, crash statistics, and mapping, all of, and all of these requirements of having federal funds, including like Title VI, environmental justice analysis, all the air quality conformity determinations. So that's what we do in the MPO area, an area that's probably more familiar with, to you, and more appropriate to, to what your needs are, is we provide support for the Mid Willamette Area Commission on Transportation. It's known as MWACT. And that is, the Oregon Transportation Commission has this, these acts that are comprised of different jurisdictions. The MWACT area has Yamhill, Polk, and Marion Counties, and they give advice to the Oregon Transportation Commission. The coordination between all these jurisdictions is really key, and we really work well with each of the jurisdictions, and the jurisdictions work well together to actually support each other's needs. So it's not just, this is my need, this is my need, it's what is the needs of the region overall. And MWACT provides a forum for that. One of the things that MWACT does is that they have a key role in prioritizing projects that are up for funding through the ODOT process. You've probably heard of Enhance, Connect Oregon, and the MWACT actually helps coordinate those priorities, and we prepare, the COG staff prepares all the necessary materials, helps the chairman and the vice chair when they meet with the Oregon Commission to, to get the materials so that they are prepared for those meetings. In this last transportation funding cycle for the 2018 to 2021 years, the MWACT area was awarded three projects totaling about $4.3 million, which was about a third of the available funds. We were very happy with that. One of the grants was for the Yamhill County Transit area. The, they had received some funds for buses, about $400,000, but there was some leftover money, and Mike Jaffe, the transportation manager, he really worked with everyone. He worked with the staff, he worked with ODOT, and he got an extra $307,000 to purchase some new buses. So those are the types of things that we do. Previous funding cycle in 2015 to 18, there was several projects nearby that were funded. Oregon 47 at Main Street in Carlton received $2 million for some bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Newburgh received about $2.5 million for a section of Oregon 219, for some bike lanes and sidewalks. and sidewalks. And then Yamhill County Transit Area also received almost $1 million to purch, for purchasing buses. They work with the Connect Oregon, and Connect Oregon, in 2012, the Connect Oregon funded the Yamhill County Intermodal Transit Center with a little over $1 million. The more recent ones included the runway at the airport and funding the, around the airport, and the Yamhailas West Side Trail, which is just south or north of McMinnville here. So trying to actually fund the transportation needs in the area is something that's key that we work on. We do help keep informed of the legislature activities, what is going on in the legislature, especially this year, if you're familiar with House Bill 27, 2017, that there was a lot of activities going on, and trying to keep track of that was, took a lot of time. And so trying to keep everybody posted on what's going on, what those mean to us. So those are some of the transportation services that, that we do for the MPO. And there's some more, the GIS and mapping services that Kim will talk about.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kim Sapinar, and I'm one of the transportation planners at Council of Governments and also a GIS specialist. Full disclosure, I'm also a McMinnville resident, so. I'm one of three GIS specialists that we have at the COG, and GIS is geographic information systems, so mapping and integration of mapping and database work. And I just wanted to touch briefly on a couple of the projects that probably are most applicable to Yamhill County for McMinnville. Starting in 2016, for Yamhill County, we basically developed and built a new online mapping system for Yamhill County. They phased out an old open-source software program, and we've built something new in-house web-based. So they have one that is accessible to the public, and then they have a modified version that they can use in-house that's got more robust information, for example, property names and database information that isn't necessarily on, on public access. For about 12 months of that time, and when, when we started, took over their work and, and maintained the website, we also did onsite updating of some of their layers of information, their address files came in onsite actually and did updates, until they had a staff member who came in and then took over some of that update. We maintain a bike map for the three-county area. We, we print it, we've maintained it since 2012, and we actually do a, we work with our, one of our partners in the Salem area to get it printed, so it's distributed for free. And it's biking in the Mid-Wilamette Valley, and on one side is sort of the focus area of in and around Salem, and on the flip side is the three-county area. And that information we maintain in an online basis and on an online map, as well as a printed copy. We do a fair amount of census work and work with census data and census training opportunities. We do that in-house. And then you may well be familiar that in the, after the 2000 census and the 2010 census, our office did your council redistricting work both, both times. So Leslie Hegewald has been your contact person in the past, and she comes through and works with staff to make three or four, five different alternatives, options for, for finalizing what your council districts would be after each decennial census. And then lastly, we also do things like notification lists, so that ODOT, in the beginning of this year, needed to have property, property owners notified in and around development projects that are coming in. So we tap into property owner databases, and then we can produce mailing labels to produce property notifications for large-scale projects. So those, those are several of the kind of general work that we do on a day-to-day basis. Our, our database work supports not only transportation work, but also the community development. We, we have done buildable land inventories, and we keep that information that's accessible, our zoning and comprehensive plan, layers and updates for smaller cities as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So I'm going to round out our presentation tonight by talking about our small business loan program, member services, and then concluding by, again, seeking some of, some input from all of you. So as I mentioned earlier, probably the largest thing that we do financially is the small business loan program. We have three loan officers on staff that have access to all the major government, federal government loan programs under the US EDA, US Department of Agriculture, Rural Communities, Small Business Administration, as well as loan opportunities that come about from time to time through Business Oregon. Because these individuals have expertise in the areas of administering, underwriting, servicing loans, we also have a contract with some communities, Newburgh, for example, to help administer their own local revolving loan programs, so that, because these programs often aren't necessarily in high demand or aren't fully funded, to support a full-time staff person, we have those staff available for our members to be able to use for their economic development activities in providing small business loans within your community. One of the things too, often I get asked, hey, can you give me an example of some of the things that you've funded lately? And actually, under our loan guidelines, we do not talk about our borrowers, at least not to any specific degree. Instead, we leave it to the borrower. It's at their discretion to know whether or not they've received one of these loan programs. But what I can tell you is the type of business that we have lent money to in the past here within McMinnville, just going back a couple of years here, that we funded a small business loan for a restaurant, another for a secondary food processing plant, which helped create, both of those combined, helped create about 10 jobs here within the city of McMinnville. We're currently processing a loan for a professional services company and also for a major hotel we are helping to fund here within the city of McMinnville. So we have very active loan program. I know the mayor, in his day-to-day job, used to interact with our loan staff quite a bit. And again, it's probably the, you know, financially, it's the largest thing we do, but probably the least well-known thing that we do as a council of governments. In the area of member services, we do have a host of services that we provide our members. Some are for fee-for-service, others are for free. Some of the things that we're most known for is that we help our member governments with executive-level recruitments, particularly smaller communities that lack an HR department. We can step in and assist the governing body with recruitments of city managers, city administrators, county administrators, city attorneys, and other department heads, whether they report to the city council or not. We are here to be able to assist. That is one of the member services we provide for on a fee-for-service basis and do that on a flat fee. We are also available to assist councils in doing goal-setting and facilitation, as well as council orientation and leadership training. We provide those services for free. That is a benefit of membership in the COG. We also assist our communities that may be going through an occasional charter review process. Oregon is a home rule state, allows its local governments to establish home rule charters. And sometimes, as communities evolve, governing bodies and other members of the community see a need to update those governing documents, and it's often advantageous to have an outside organization come in and assist. And that's one of the roles that we are happy to play for our member governments. We provide customized training and a whole bunch of different topics, depending upon the needs of the organization. I've already mentioned new council orientation would be kind of an example of that. We are available to provide technical assistance, even if you aren't a member that receives planning services for, from us. Our planners are available to be able to field calls and help members get pointed in the right direction. I'm also available as a former city manager and city attorney to assist our local government officials as needed. And again, not playing the role of your city attorney, not playing the role of your city manager, but helping get you pointed in the right direction towards other resources. We are available on a consultative basis for that. We also, as the mayor began with the introductory comments, we help evaluate chief executive officers, any, any appointed staff person that reports to a governing body. We will assist that governing body with the evaluation of that individual. Again, we find that normally it's governments that lack an HR department, or where it might be a little uncomfortable to have a human resources director who reports to the city manager facilitate his or her boss's evaluation. We are available to help facilitate those evaluations. And then we do other services as requested. So in summary, as you take a look at what we do, we essentially provide consolidated services for our members. Those services where perhaps individually, it's not economical for a unit of local government to house a particular function in its own entity, we provide those services on a consolidated basis, whether it's the transportation planning, community development, business lending, those sorts of services. We coordinate our federal regional response and efforts in the area of transportation, as well as economic development, and we're a regional voice in the area of transportation policy before the state. And then finally, we attempt to bridge the gap, to help pull together our units of local government in the region, because we believe that we can accomplish more together collectively than what we can individually. Looking forward and into the future, what might, what might we do as a council of governments? Again, as I mentioned, I did a listening tour as a new executive director to get member feedback on what sort of things that we could do to be a little bit more relevant for our units of government. The sorts of things that I heard was that it'd be nice if the, if the COG could step up and provide enhanced human resource services beyond just the evaluations and the recruitment, but also to help with class and comp studies and job description reviews and other core human resource-type services. I heard loudly from the membership that they'd like enhanced training, a more robust training program, particularly for elected officials and for newly-elected officials. We also heard that they, that a lot of members are very interested in seeing the COG provide legal services. Not necessarily to replace your city attorney, you've got a very fine city attorney who I worked with in the past, but to provide specialized legal services, for example, land use to support our land use planning efforts, to assist with general government's consultation, and also in specialized areas such as telecommunications franchise renewals, areas that even a lot of city attorneys where it requires a specialty. Again, that may be a role that we can play, where we can have that specialized service available on a regional basis, so that you don't have to have that here locally where it only gets used once every five to 10 years, depending upon the cycle of your telecommunications franchise renewals. We've heard from our members that they'd like to see us step up and do a little bit more in the area of grant administration, helping you identify and compete for grant opportunities, not just in the economic development area, which you heard Renata talk about already, but also other types of grants, whether it be, for example, a justice assistance grant, which right now is, is an area where we, we haven't provided services, are not providing services currently and have not done so in the past. And then finally, although we have been a voice for the region in the area of transportation, we've heard, I've heard from our members that they'd like to see us be more of a regional voice on other issues, whether it's emergency management, homelessness, or other issues that are unique to our region, the members are asking the COG to step up and play a larger role. And that sort of feedback, I'll be taking back to the Board of Governors. We are governed by a board. Again, Councilor Jeffries serves for McMinnville. Just about every COG member has a representative on the board, with the exception of the smallest of small cities. For those, they get together and they select one of themselves to represent the collective interests of those small cities on our board. And so I'll be taking this feedback back to them and asking them what we would like to do as a region. And so with that, I will turn the question back to you and ask you, you know, are, other than what's on this slide, are there other services that you think we should be providing as a council of governments to make your membership in the COG more relevant?
Thank you, Sean. Counselors, any questions or feedback for Sean from your perspective?
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Ken.
Excellent presentation. Thank you. That's really helped my knowledge of the whole COG. My question is, on your lending, which is 54% of your actual business, are you, are you a go-between or middleman that you have access to all these major government loan programs? Does COG actually lend money, or are you putting programs together for, for different agencies?
Yes, that's a, that's a great, a great question, counselor. And the, and the answer is yes, we do both. So we, we do intermediary lending for those federal programs and also those revolving loan programs that individual communities have. We also have dollars that we also lend. I neglected to bring our lending brochure, but we have a brochure that, rather than kind of talk about it from the funding source, instead, it, it looks at it from an eligibility standpoint and sets out all the different lending possibilities that we have. I'm happy to provide that to the city manager for you, if you'd like more information on those lending programs that we provide.
I had one other question too.
Go ahead, Ken.
Was that, are you familiar with Visit McMinnville?
I am not.
It's a city agency that promotes tourism and, and other things for the community. Would you work with an organization such as that or, or anything like that to help with urban renewal, downtown development, things like that?
Yes. The short answer is yes. Renata, if you wouldn't mind joining me up here. The, so one of the, one of the things we've not done as a region is necessarily partner very carefully or very closely with what's called a DMO, a destination marketing organization. We have several within our region. I've not had a member ask about that, although I can tell you, when I was with the city of Salem, we worked very closely in partnership with our DMO, which, that particular DMO represents a large part of the region that, that the COG covers. And I do think that's an opportunity for us as a council of governments, is to reach out to those DMOS and see how we can partner over the area of tourism. Of course, a key component of tourism is to have tourist attractions available, and that's where urban renewal fits in. We do have, as Renata indicated in her presentation, we have the staff and expertise to be able to assist a community in the development of an urban renewal plan, as well as the administration of that plan, the, the putting together the financial analysis, the projects, and having it go through the adoption process for a community. Is there anything more that you want to add on urban renewal, Renata?
We can provide technical assistance. We can manage those fund portfolios. We have initiated new, I believe my predecessor worked on an urban renewal facade program and development, if not for the city of McMinnville. I have enjoyed meeting your new planning director and staff and have been to some presentations where she, in, in working with McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, has put on some presentations. So we try to engage and support them as best we can in their robust efforts. But I, I think if there's, whether it's technical assistance or managing various programs to make your staff kind of ease some of the pressures on them, definitely something we're open to, for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for your presentation. It really opened my eyes, and I had no idea you guys did business lending, so that was a nice piece for me to pay attention to.
Thank you. Wendy?
Thank you for the presentation. It's overwhelming the number of ways that you're supporting the communities that are members. My question is, if for the membership, how do you continually reach out and make sure that the members are maximizing, like know about all these services? I mean, there's so many things that you can help with, and where it fits into what they're already doing or where their needs are.
Thank you for that question, counselor. It's a great question. One of the things I don't think we've done well, and again, I'm, I'm the new person, so I get to say these things, right? Well, I don't know that we've necessarily done the outreach and got out to the members and to other interested parties, the sorts of things that we do as a COG. In other words, I think marketing and, and public relations is something we can do a better job of, and that is something I intend on having a conversation with the board about. One of the things I would like to do is take the, what I've received from my listening tour, the feedback I've received in the listening tour, it, we'll be presenting that to our board actually next week, which will be meeting, and then proposing that if the board is amenable to it, to go through a strategic planning process where we can take the various feedback, and my observation that one of the things I think we can do a better job of is marketing our programs and services, and then prioritize that effort and get the board's input on developing a path ahead on those areas that you saw on the previous slide, as well as doing a little bit better job doing outreach. That being said, we do stand ready to give this type of presentation to any of our members. We also host an annual dinner that we invite all of the electeds and senior appointees in our member governments to. And we do an annual report annually to, to, to talk about what it is that we have accomplished as a region. And so those are our primary means right now of getting the word out on what we do. But I agree with you, I think we can do a little bit better job with our web presence, marketing materials, brochures, and other things. marketing materials, brochures, and other things. So, point well taken.
Well, thank you. I mean, it's great that you're offering some of these services that as communities we might not be able to provide for ourselves.
Kevin?
Thanks again for coming and representing the COG well. The question that I have, I guess, is there are different models of COG throughout the state. This one seems to be much more focused on administrative services and kind of more government functions, and there are others that also serve more of a social services role. So I think there's one at the coast that is kind of like, it's like a long-term care ombudsman office out of it, and there's others that help with Medicare enrollment. I understand that the Marion Polk and Salem Kaiser area have come up with a group that's going to be addressing homelessness. There's been some discussion about the COG perhaps getting involved in that, and that's certainly something McMinnville is passionate about as well. Can you report on that? Has there been any further discussions about the COG playing a role in that as a facilitator? And how can we get involved in that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor, for the question. So, as you noted, we are a little unique, our council of governments, in that we don't historically, we have not historically and currently do not provide social services. All of the other council of governments in the state of Oregon do provide social services funded through federal and state dollars. They're often known as AAA services or area agencies on aging that implement various social services for seniors, disabled, veterans. In our region, those services are actually provided for by Northwest Senior Disabled Services, which is also an intergovernmental agreement, and remarkably, its board of directors looks a lot like my board of directors. And so for our region, they have that area very well covered. That being said, there certainly are emerging issues like the homelessness issue, and the effort that the Counselor's referring to, for those who aren't familiar with this, the city of Salem and Kaiser, along with Marion and Polk County, joined together, some key elected leaders, formed a coalition to develop a strategic plan around eradicating homelessness, and really a kind of a regional effort among those jurisdictions as to how they can pool resources, avoid duplication of effort. One of the things that they identified in that effort was that they needed to, a coordinator, somebody who could take on various aspects of the strategic plan, particularly projects and tasks for which there was no government agency or private agency listed. And as they were looking for a place to house this position, as you can imagine, the COG looked like a good fit, because that's the sort of thing that we do. We sit and we're available for our members where we're going to get several units of local government together on an issue. We are a great place to convene those efforts. And so those communities approached the COG, and in the June council, or in the June board meeting, the board authorized me to sit down with those jurisdictions and work out an intergovernmental agreement whereby those jurisdictions are going to pay for the staff person, but we're going to house and support them within the COG. And actually, Counselor, you're going to see that in your agenda packet tomorrow, as we did reach terms on that intergovernmental agreement, and that'll be going to the full board next week. In the intervening time, the cities of Monmouth and Independence also stepped up and said we would like to participate in this effort, and they were able to identify some specific needs that they had that would fit this coordinator's skill set, and so that person will be providing service to them under a contract. I have had some discussions with your city manager and invited the city manager and other key staff here to come down and meet with some of those key leaders that were part of that effort to put together that strategic plan. You know, again, as a member service, where we see success in one part of the region and others are interested, we try to get those parties together. Right now, that plan, that strategic plan that was developed for which this coordinator position, and all of those entities will be paying for 100% of that person's time and expenses, it's really focused on that region, but hopefully with some successes and over time, I do think it's possible that that strategic plan could take on a tri-county sort of perspective and that this position over time could morph into a more core service of the COG. But at least right now, as it exists, it's really a shared position being paid for by those jurisdictions where we're facilitating the coordination of that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Very enlightening, and I know we're going to have more of a focus on the services you'll be able to provide for us, and I've taken some notes, and we'll have an opportunity to communicate and talk.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
And thanks, staff, for coming and being a part of it with us tonight. As we move into the business portion of our meeting tonight, I just wanted to make reference to the beautiful flowers that we have up here. No, it's not a member of the council's birthday, but our hands and words are not for hurting. They typically will come and make a presentation, and they dropped by earlier this evening and thought that this would leave a kind of what they're all about. And so we'll probably be doing a proclamation for them in the very near future, but tonight the flowers are presented by hands and words are not for hurting. So I wanted to make reference to that. That now takes us to resolutions tonight. Our first resolution, Resolution 201765, a resolution of the city of McMinnville, Yamhill County, Oregon, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation bonds, designating and authorized representative, authorizing execution of the bonds and related matters. So at this point, I'll call on our finance director, Marcia, to present to us this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you recall, in November of 2014, the McMinnville voters approved $24 million in general obligation debt for street improvement projects, and we issued $16 million of that 24 in April of 2015. Those bond proceeds are being spent in all the projects that you're seeing around town right now, First and Second Street improvements, a lot of street resurfacing in different parts of town, Second Street, Fifth Street, and some Alpine Avenue improvements. So working with our city engineer, Mike Bissett, we've been talking about our options and the timing of the issuance of the remaining debt, which is approximately $7.9 million. And we brought into that conversation our municipal advisor, Qiu Won, and I think some of you may know her, we've worked with her for a number of years, and she was our municipal advisor for the first series of bonds that we issued. Qiu Won is really very well respected across the state with lots of government agencies, and she is currently associated with the PFM Group. Qiu Won is here this evening to talk with you about the city's options and to answer your questions, and with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Marcia. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. My name is Qiu Won Nguyen, just think letter Q, number one, that's how you say my name. And my address is 650 Northeast Holiday Street, Suite 1600, Portland, 97232. Marcia gave you an overview already of the fact that you have issued the first six, roughly $16 million of the 24 million authorization, and now you have around $7.9 million remaining to be issued. And I understand that Mike had mentioned that you're ready to have funds early part of next year to use for projects. And so I looked at the options that are available to the city, and right now, actually, rates are still very favorable. And the two method of sales that are available to you is selling bonds to the public via a public sale, which is what you did the last time around, or selling bonds directly to a commercial bank for them to keep that as an investment in their own portfolio, and that's called a bank placement. So I did a comparison of the public sale versus the bank placement, and the all-in-interest cost between the two really just vary between 2.4% to 2.56%. So the difference is not great, and since I'm just estimating really the interest rates, it's in the, I would say that the two methods are very comparable. The biggest difference really between the two options is that if you did a public sale, you need to prepare an official statement, which you have done before, an offering statement, and it requires a little bit longer time for staff to work and prepare that. But the major difference is that when you sell bonds publicly, premium bonds are right now really very well received. And therefore, if we sold bonds via a public sale, the city could possibly get around $650,000 more for projects, whereas if you did a bank placement, basically the banks usually just do par bonds, so you wouldn't have that premium. Of course, if you sold premium bonds, you will pay more in annual debt service because you do have that extra $600 and some thousand. Now, the amount I mentioned, $650,000, is just an estimate. It's really going to be based upon the time that we actually sell bonds, what the appetite is and the interest rate at that time, but, you know, I think that's a good estimate. And I also did a little bit of estimates on the tax rate impact of the two methods, and under the public sale, I estimate the average tax rate to be around 21 cents per thousand of assessed value, and for the bank placement, around 19 cents. And of course, the difference is also because with the public sale, you do get more money for projects. I think if you have any questions, I'd be very glad to answer them.
Any questions for Qiu Won?
I have one question, so the, to me, the financial benefit seems to lie with the public sale, but then you also noted that that would take on a considerably more staff time to execute. So my question is both for staff, but also for you, Qiu Won, is that, is there, and perhaps I missed this, I'm sorry if I did in the reading, but other than moving forward, is there a recommendation of which method we would pursue, a public sale or a bank placement?
Thank you for asking the question about staff time. As we did prepare an official statement in 2015, when we issued the first series of bonds, we got a really good start on gathering that information, and that's where a lot of the time comes in, is pulling together, there's a lot of demographic, financial, economic information in the official statements. And I would say, though, that Qiu Won and also the staff at Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, which serves as our bond counselor and our disclosure counsel, are very, very helpful with that official statement. So I think that, I appreciate the question again, but there's something that with the help of staff and our advisors, that we can do that. I think that Qiu Won did a great job of laying out the options for you and really highlighting the major factors that you would need to take into consideration when making the decision about which the best option is. And I don't know if Mike has any, anything to add to that?
He wants more money. We spoke about that a little bit at the staff level, and certainly we've been working very hard to keep the projects separate that we promised to accomplish and keep them all within their own budgets. We have leveraged other sources of funds to make sure that we continue to accomplish all the work that we've promised. We're using some gas tax money, we're using system development charge funds, we're using urban renewal funds in the Alpine project, we're using bond interest, and we are using the previous premium that was issued with the first sale. So, long story short, if the decision is to made to do a bank placement, we'll make sure to get the projects done within the budget we're given, and if there are additional resources available, there are pedestrian projects and street surfacing projects, potentially projects like Old Sheridan that may come in at higher costs than anticipated that we could use those funds on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion among council?
Just one quick one, Mayor.
Yes.
So, we have such a solid bond rating or credit rating, how do we take advantage of that in the best way possible? Is that through the public sale with premium bonds?
Well, you know, the city will go for a, to the rating agency for a bond rating if we do a public sale, and if we did a bank placement, the bank will not require that we go get a rating. But, you know, the banks do take into account the city's credit rating and the city's finances and all of that. So I think if you choose to go for a public sale, I don't really, I think we, Jeff had mentioned this before, asked me actually the same question, nothing came up that would cause me any concerns relating to the rating, but I think, you know, the determination would be really, no matter which way you go, I think you're very well positioned for a good financing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But if I'm not mistaken, if we went to a bank loan, our credit worthiness and that rating would be reflected in the interest rate, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Where if we were to go to a public, then we could sell at a premium, which would possibly bring us more money, correct?
Right, you're right.
Okay. Other comments or discussion? We have two directions in front of us, and so I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 201765, which would give us a direction of which way we would want to go. The move? Okay, and Adam, that would be to go which, do we have to specify now, Marcia?
I believe that we're as we can require our bond council to allow us to go with their options.
Okay, whatever we would feel.
Right, the resolution basically designates the authorized representative, who is the city manager or the finance director, or they're designated to go forth and do good.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, a second?
Okay.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Garvin and seconded by Counselor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. This Resolution 201765 is passed unanimously by a vote of six to six. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Resolution Number 2017-66, a resolution initiating the processing and setting a date and time for a public hearing to vacate a portion of Edmanson Street, RV 2-17. I'll turn it over to our community development director, Mike Bissett, to make a presentation. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, before that, would it be all right if I stepped down off the dais? I have a conflict of interest, which was also stated earlier today, and I would like to recuse myself.
Thank you, Counselor. And that is so noted.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet that outlines the vacation process in Oregon. Specifically, there are two methods of street vacation that can be pursued, a citizen-initiated process via petition and a city-initiated process. What you have before you this evening is a request from Mr. Anderson that the city initiate the vacation process. In my memo, I've provided some background on the specific area that is being requested for vacation, in particular, the prior history where that area had been previously discussed for vacation, but the developer at the time chose to withdraw that request. I've also provided for you copies of the resolution and exhibits associated with the resolution, a site map of ordinance vacation for the ordinance, the vacation that was done for the right of way to the south. We provided a public meeting notice to the area residents and included maps. We've provided for you that area of notification. Also before you this evening are copies of eight letters totaling 22 pages of written testimony from residents that we received prior to 5:00 PM this evening. Those letters are in opposition of this evening's resolution. So before you have a decision before you this evening as to whether or not to initiate the vacation request, you had testimony earlier this evening regarding that request. If you choose to proceed with the adoption of the resolution, the state the staff will initiate the vacation process, which will include public notice, the setting of a hearing and notification of that hearing, a council hearing in front of this body on November 28th, at which time you would consider an ordinance and the public testimony associated with that ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, open it up for council discussion. Any questions for Mike?
I'll go ahead. In the background, in your memorandum, Mike, it, it says, "For the best interest of the public." And that should be, those reasons should be included in, in this. But I haven't, in my packet, I haven't been able to find in writing Mr. Anderson's reasons that it's in the best interest of the public.
That, and I'll refer to City Attorney Kosch if I get this wrong, but that requirement is only under the citizen-initiated process, where there's a petition and signatures by the adjacent and affected property owners. That's when that statement is required. Under a city-initiated process, city council can deem that they believe that the area is not, no longer in the public's interests as right-of-way, and you can initiate the process without that statement.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Go ahead, Alan.
I have one. Mike, is there any way to provide readjustment of property lines for all abutting property owners to this piece legally?
The statute, if there is a vacation ordinance adopted, statute sets out how that property is returned to the adjacent landowners. And typically, it is split between properties where it, from whence it came. And so in this case, that right-of-way was dedicated on the Cozine's third edition subdivision plat. And so it would be returned to those properties that are within that plat boundary. The properties to the west, specifically to the Russ Lane properties, were created under a different plat and from a different property. And so they would not be receiving any portion of the vacated area. Now, there is the ability for, if, let's say, that property were returned to Mr. Anderson, there would be an ability for him to do a property line adjustment and give some of the property to the adjacent property owners if that were so agreed upon. In fact, that happened when Mr. Horton did the partition to the south in the vacation process. 10 feet of that property was given to the people adjacent to Daniel's court.
Yeah, so there is a vehicle legally to do that.
It's not through the vacation process, but would it be through a boundary line adjustment and the deeds associated? That's correct.
Thank you.
Other discussion, Wendy?
I'm not sure if this is a question for you, Mike, or for our attorney.
He's doing great.
But if, when we're looking at a vacation, we have to look at whether or not this right-of-way is still usable for the purpose it was set out. So in this case, it was set forth as a street right-of-way. We have to take that into consideration and not consider other public services it's providing. Isn't that correct? Is that correct, or?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
I thought so.
I don't believe that's what the statute reads, but.
I mean.
Yeah, at, at the end of the day, it's, it's up to the, the council to determine if it's in the public interest to, to move forward with vacating it based on whatever.
Okay, it doesn't.
Factors you consider, including what the initial purpose of the, of the dedicated right-of-way was for.
Not restricted to that.
I, I, I don't, I don't read in the statute where, where you have such a restriction.
Okay, thank you.
But Mike can throw something at me if I'm wrong.
That, that's my understanding as well. And you're allowed to consider whether there might be future public interest in that space as well, even though it's not been developed at this time.
All right, thank you.
A second part of Alan's question would be, with the vacated land going back to the original deeded plot, when that occurred, that was still under the two-thirds statute. And so now that we have this new statute, would that open it up that we could evenly divide that, or is that?
I, I, I heard the, the public comments tonight about a new statute. I'm not sure what that was referring to. The, the provisions within the vacation statutes that allow for the, a city council to initiate on their own petition were actually adopted in 1995.
Okay.
So they've been around for a while. The, it's ORS 271140 that spells out how the title to the vacated area is to vest. And, and it's exactly as, as Mr. Bisson has indicated. Anything that happens once the, the city has vacated it to adjust property lines are between the private property owners.
So that can't be a condition of the vacation process?
We, the statute doesn't authorize the city upon vacation to deviate from this statutory provision. It would be akin to a taking of that property from the, the successor indeed to the original property owner that dedicated it to the city for a particular purpose. So when we vacate, we're not deeding so much as removing the right-of-way interest that the city held for the public benefit.
Okay, thank you.
I have some thoughts on this, just in the, the sense that when Mr. Anderson originally brought this to us almost two years ago, I believe, seemed like a very reasonable request, given the number of, of factors. I think I was a little taken off guard, I suppose, this evening by the amount of, uh, uh, contest from the surrounding property owners. And, and certainly, that gives me a fair amount of pause. In my short time on council, I think we've only done one other street vacation. And it was certainly to kind of serve the greater public good. And, and that was really clear. I have concerns about this council initiating this vacation on behalf of Mr. Anderson when it is proposed, it is so contested in the area, in the neighborhood. It seems to potentially be injecting ourselves into a neighborhood disagreement that doesn't necessarily need any assistance from the city at this time. And, and I don't necessarily see the, the greater good, although I do understand that it would be a benefit to Mr. Anderson. I, I don't wish him to deprive, deprive him. But I, I'm not sure I see the compelling information as to why we should move forward with the city-initiated street vacation.
Wasn't there an application, a fee paid for, an application for vacation?
Certainly, that fee could be returned if the council declines to adopt a resolution moving forward.
Could I ask a question? Mr. Anderson wants to build this retaining wall. Is he suffering a great deal from erosion or something coming down and causing him problems in his property?
I believe you have testimony from Mr. Anderson that that's the case. I, I, I don't know that that situation is significantly different from when the house was first constructed.
Okay. Is this property where the, where the prop, vacation is to take place? Is this actually part of a slope?
A, a portion of it is slope. And as you've seen in some of the public testimonies this evening, there is an upper portion of the area that's fairly flat.
Okay. And are the trees on the upper part where it's flat?
I, I think there are trees at various points within the public right-of-way that's being requested to be vacated.
Adam?
I don't remember if it was the, the Crosses or the Rodriguezes that have put money into arborists properly pruning their trees. But could the same, since that's being done on the right-of-way, could Mr. Anderson theoretically plant erosion control vegetation instead of erecting a retaining wall through a vacation process?
If the council were to deem that that area is still best served as public right-of-way, then there could be direction to staff to work with Mr. Anderson to see if there are ways to mitigate his concerns.
Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay, I asked for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-66.
So that's to call for a public hearing on it.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Council President Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And all those who oppose signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Okay. This, this resolution does not pass at a vote of three to two. And so we will not move to, move that forward into the implementation of a public hearing. Thank you for your discussion. Okay. Kevin, if you want to come back up, we'll move on to our consent agenda. In our consent agenda this evening, we consider the meeting of September 12th, 2017. That was our dinner and regular council meeting. September 18th, 2017, a specially called city council meeting. September 26th, 2017, a dinner and regular council meeting. We also have this evening for consideration is an OLCC liquor license application for winery, second location for Oregon Sedary Partner LLC, Retour Wire Wine Company located at 30, 336 Northeast Davis. We also have for consideration an OLCC license application for limited on-premise cells for the Blue Quail located at 701 Northeast Third Street. And consideration for a LL, an OLCC liquor license application for winery, no consumptions for Gusty Farms Estate Vineyard and Winery LLC located at 2803 Northeast Orchard Avenue. Any counselor who would request to have items removed from the consent agenda and placed on a regu, on the regular place on our agenda? Do I have any? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
The move.
Second.
Has been moved by Counselor Jeffries and seconded by Counselor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? This, the consent agenda passes unanimously, six to six. We're going to turn some time over to City Manager Jeff Towery, who will update us on our report of strategic planning. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last month, as we indicated, the management team worked with a facilitator, a day-long session to put together a work plan and calendar and scope of services for consultant services for strategic planning. We just wanted to give you a brief update on that tonight. You've got a next slide, Melissa. Thanks. So this is a little bit tough to read up on the screen. I apologize for that. We, we have put together a pretty drafty timeline based on the, what our sense of the work moving forward would be. I think the, we've, we've established what we think may be a reasonable but fairly aggressive timeline to bring a final strategic plan to the council in, in August, at the end of August of next year. We have prepared a draft consultant services scope for the overall strategic planning effort, as well as a separate scope of service for economic development strategy. And in addition to this brief timeline that we put together, we just wanted to let you know that we think it's reasonable to expect to have consultants on board to assess, assist with the process near the end of the calendar year. I would suggest that we convene a brief, a relatively small committee, maybe a couple of members of the community, a couple of members of council and some key staff to review those proposals and make a recommendation to me as we select consultants. We've already circulated, Heather, we already sent out the RFP for the economic strategy. So we've sent that out already to a list of, I think, seven or eight consultant services. We've got a, a, a list that is similar. Some of the firms that we were looking at can do the entire job. Some of them are more focused on economic development. There's, there's another list of probably four or five consultants that we provide the RFP for the overall project to. And, and we think that we'd be able to award contracts for both of those services in November of this year and have somebody on board and, and ready to start moving with the process in January. I wanted to talk a little bit about the stakeholder review process. We, we talked in concept with the council earlier about the possibility of utilizing both the steering committee to report back to the council, as well as a series of focus groups to engage stakeholder feedback on both the economic strategy and the overall strategic plan. I would encourage you to think about the, kind of, the key stakeholders and organizations that you'd like to have represented on that group. And maybe think a little bit about the specific work you would ask that committee to do. We would not recommend that we advertise or select that committee yet because each consultant that we may consider is going to have a different approach to doing stakeholder involvement. And I think having a consultant on board will really inform the details of the stakeholder engagement as we move forward. So I think there are certain parties and certain leadership characteristics that we, we want to have on each stakeholder group. But if, if we were to go out and recruit and somebody says, well, how many times would I meet? And how often would it be? And how, what's the time commitment? I think that's going to vary by consultant service because each of them will bring a little bit of a different approach to the process. So I wanted to bring you kind of up to speed on the current work that we have done thus far and give you the chance to ask any questions or make any observations that you have for me or the rest of the executive team that's here tonight.
Jeff, I would agree when you talk about the involvement of stakeholders that we wait until we know what consultant and their approach. I had an opportunity two weeks ago in attending the LOC conference of, of going to one of the breakout groups where a consultant specifically said, you need to start with the stakeholder to get community vision. And you need to start there and then you get into a, which is, is anywhere from 10 to 20 years out. You get a good vision of where the community sees itself going. Then you do the strategic plan, which is, you know, five to eight years. And then you go into your annual goal setting that falls within that. So I'd agree from some of the good discussion we had at that conference, at that breakout session, you're right on, right on, on path. Any other thoughts or? Again, I think we've, we've shared the, we've shared the message, how quickly we want to move and it's in front of us this evening and it feels good. And, and having a consultant coming in to help us, I think is going to be very appropriate. So Jeff and staff, thank you for your direction. I know you, as the department heads, and have met and helped frame what we need to be doing up to this point also. Okay. This brings us this evening to our advice and informational items. And, and it is, it's a quarter to nine. I thought we might be ahead of schedule tonight. But I did ask if, if you could just brief us on your committee assignments or any other assignments that you might have. Recognizing that for many members of the council, this is their only time to know what's happening on the committees. And so I'm just going to start. Remy, if I'll turn down to you, if you could update us on committee assignments you have. I know many of the committees you're, you're on. We have various individuals on those committees also. But you chair a couple of those, so go ahead if you would.
Okay, I'll do my best, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So the homeless, Housing for Homeless Subcommittee of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, which is a, um, community-wide committee, including county and, and many community stakeholders, as well met yesterday and worked to advance a couple of different plans focused on. focused on, uh, micropopulations within our homeless community. Um, and we also received an, uh, update from, um, a group that is specifically working on, um, uh, relieving our homeless veterans of, uh, of being homeless. Um, and they informed us some progress that they had made, additional funds that had been, uh, procured and, um, how effectively that, uh, that plan was working. Um, and the county, uh, through Health and Human Services also has a Vista volunteer that is now, uh, working with the members of the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee to develop these action plans that are focused on, uh, micropopulations, um, such as, uh, senior women, um, youth, vehicular homeless and veterans, all, all, uh, examples that are currently in, in the works. Um, and then the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, met two weeks ago. Heather, you might have to help me. It's a, that was too long weeks ago. But we are doing a lot. Heather is really doing a lot in there. Kelly might be able to do more, but, uh, progressing, uh, uh, progress is being made with cottage codes, which have, um, has gone to the Planning Commission. And there's a lot of work being done there, looking at ADUs, um, and how those, uh, um, regulations might, um, might change or, or might not, but, but that's all under review. There's a couple of other huge things that we're working on in there. This is very embarrassing, but if you prompt me, I'll, I'll, I'll go with it.
So one of the things we're working on is emergency shelter ordinances and doing research relative to those. Uh, to pass for that, an emergency weather ordinance, um, with the upcoming season in front of us. And then also looking at some of the things Portland and Eugene have done, um, to be able to implement projects and programs in their community.
Yeah, but also we're looking to smaller communities.
Yes, yes. And so one of the things we discussed was that the larger communities have resources that we don't have access to. So now looking for smaller communities of similar sizes as McMinnville that have come up with solutions as well as a means of sort of bringing apples to apples comparison.
Plus, we're also looking at, going back and talking to people we've talked to before and seeing if maybe they can, you know, find ways to work within the boundaries we need to make things happen in McMinnville, like the Blanchet Farms and some of these other folks that we've seen as resources in the Covenant Church.
And a number of our counselor, council members are doing a lot of work, um, regardless of being on this committee or not. So, um, uh, I know Adam, you and Kelly, who is on the committee, but, but you guys have gone out and done a lot of work. Kelly's just, uh, shared with me some other, uh, programs that are happening in other cities. So there's a lot being discussed and a lot, uh, just a tremendous amount of work and energy being put in from a lot of different directions. Um, and, uh, and then Heather gave me the title for the book she's going to write. It's called Beyond the Codes, Homeless Exploring a State of Emergency.
Oh, did you mention the teen center thing?
Go ahead.
Oh, well, the teen center, there's a possibility that we are going to, uh, progress with a, a teen center. We're, we're looking at the property. Uh, it's over possibly off 14th Street and, but it requires, uh, everybody to feel comfortable about the improvements that need to be done. And for also YCAP, who would administer the teen center to buy into the whole thing. They're feeling much more positive about it, but it has to be the right fit. So just something to be aware of for the future.
Thank you, Remy. A lot of good things happening.
You start asking for a lot of money. Especially during crushes.
Alan, we'll move to you.
Uh, I too am on the Affordable Housing Task Force. Uh, not as city councilman, but as a private citizen builder developer type. So a lot of good things going on. I did miss the last meeting, so I'm sorry about that. Um, but it is moving forward in a very favorable fashion, I think. I think that the biggest thing on the AC, uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, ADUs, uh, is the, uh, potential of eliminating the utility hookups individually for those units. And that's, uh, I don't know if we pass that or not, but that's, that's up. Maybe you can fill us in.
Yeah, so there's actually two large items on the ADU code, which you will see, um, at your next meeting on October 24th, because you do have a recommendation coming from you from Planning Commission, and they've worked through it. Uh, one is that currently we require separate services for accessory dwelling units. We're removing that requirement. Um, and then also we have thresholds for size, minimum, maximum. We're going to increase the maximum size a little bit and not have a minimum size. It will be based on building code issues.
Also, the, uh, Airport Commission is always on top of things out there. And I think our airport managers are, are learning a lot of good things, getting a lot of good experience. Um, we have had a delay in the reconstruction of the runway. Uh, through nobody's real fault, we don't feel. Mike, what's, what's the latest on the completion of the runway?
Uh, work continues in earnest on the runway rehab project. They've been paving, um, uh, as Counselor Rudin noted, they are behind schedule. And per the contract terms, they're being assessed for, for, uh, being behind schedule. Uh, so, uh, continue to work closely. We connect to make sure the word gets out and to try to mitigate, mitigate any impacts that that is having on the airport users, so.
Um, one of the key things was the nesting habits of a certain bird out there, which we all know. Um, and so that's kind of played into the whole thing. Uh, but everybody's getting around it and going to move forward. Um, the Historic Landmarks Committee is a pretty vibrant committee. It's chaired by a very experienced person. And I got a lot of, uh, great, uh, community involvement there. And I see the tasks they take on are going to increase as time goes along, as the city grows and wants to preserve as much as we can about our heritage and history. So, good thing.
Thank you, Alan. Wendy?
Um, so we did just have an urban renewal advisory committee meeting, and it was a very, uh, a good one. We talked about, one of the things we discussed in detail was coming up with a streetscape plan for the Alpine area. We have, uh, the main street. There's a really detailed plan, but there's no guidance really for the, the lateral streets and, uh, guidelines. And we have potentially a, um, private investor that might be investing out there. It would be good for us to have something in place to be able to guide whatever other development happens out there. So we're starting to look at that, um, a plan for the streetscape. And then we looked at specific, um, loan, uh, the Atticus Hotel, the specific, more specifics on the agreement about how the loan will be relieved over time. There was a really good presentation that Heather gave that detailed over time, the, how the loan forgiveness would come about. Uh, we all appreciated that and it looked like a really good approach to us. So we gave our approval for that. And we got an update on, um, Alpine and the parking study we talked about, although we have no conclusions yet, but we had a good discussion about, um, cost-effective, uh, solutions that might be coming our way to address some of the parking discoveries that were made. So those were the primary things we talked about.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's go to Adam.
Um, YCOM, we haven't met for a, a few months here, but, um, we did reschedule our October meeting from its normal second Thursday to, uh, next Wednesday to make that happen. Um, the CAD upgrade project continues to move forward. Uh, we anticipate that going live right now in, uh, October of 2018. It is the largest agency project since the relocation in 2008. Um, currently Rita is finalizing, or Patty's actually finalizing upgrade documents and making final adjustments to the scope of work. Um, with that upgrade, we're the last agency to get deep software discounts. Um, and what that means is basically they're buying back our existing software and giving us a credit for that, and they're discontinuing that practice. They were supposed to discontinue it over a year ago, but since we had initiated this process in good faith, uh, Tri-Tex crediting us that to the tune of, uh, about $126,000. Um, and overall, our savings with being an existing Tri-Tech, um, is about $310,000. So it's paid dividends to stick with the system that we have. And, uh, other than that, um, we're still working on getting text capabilities for 911. Right now, we're kind of on a, an island per se, if you look at a map. So someone could be texting up in Washington County. And once they come down past Rex Hill, they, they lose that capability. Um, but with that, right now, if we were to implement that, uh, ahead of time, it puts our, our YCOM dispatchers on two separate screens. It doesn't self-integrate. Um, and we don't really have the capacity to do that. So we'll for sure have texting capability when we come onto that upgraded system about a year from now. So that's something exciting to, you know, move with the times and give somebody that ability. My personal preference is I still think a phone call is, is best because you can communicate. And if you do, uh, drop the phone, for instance, that dispatcher can still pick up on cues on that call, whereas the text, if you don't text back, they don't know if that domestic violence issue is still live or if you've removed yourself from the situation or, or what that could be. So, um, it's, it's got both sides. But, um, I think overall it, it gives people the ability to, to connect when maybe they couldn't make a phone call, but they could send a quick text, so. Um, and then with the Downtown Task Force, Matt's finalizing some scheduling stuff for us. And hopefully Susan, Matt, myself, Kelly and some others will get, get active on that here in the next couple of weeks moving forward and start to present here every two months with some ideas.
Thank you, Adam. Kevin?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Kelly?
Uh, visit McMinnville as always, is, uh, looking ahead. They were happy to announce that they got a $20,000 Travel Oregon grant, uh, for website update. And they're happy that, uh, Travel Oregon is also posting a lot more pictures of McMinnville and stuff on their website. Um, Jeff has been asked, uh, by the MDA to sit in on their hiring committee for the new executive director. Uh, they received a lot more money than they anticipated for their first quarter, uh, of the transient lodging taxes. So they were very excited about that. I think it was like somewhere around 40,000 more than they were expecting. And, um, let's see, they received another 78,000 owed to us. Oh, no, that was something else. I'm sorry. We were worth $7,500 from the Oregon License Play Grant. And, uh, then we also had another matching grant of 8,000 that was gifted to us for the, uh, website project. So all in all, good money coming in. And, uh, we're waiting to see the progress on the, uh, event center or event situation, which is coming up, I think in December.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, a couple of, uh, committees that Kelly and I sit on, the, um, the Yamhill County, uh, Newburgh Dundee Bypass Committee. And we've been keeping you somewhat updated. As you know, we received out of House Bill 2017, received $22 million towards Phase Two. Put with the 10 million that we saved from Phase One brings us to 32 against an anticipated cost of somewhere between 80 and 90 million to do property acquisition and, um, and design work. Then that gets us to a point where we can then, uh, be shovel-ready and the federal government come in and help build. Um, so we're working right now on that gap. And, uh, we have a meeting set with Dave Hogleberg and, uh, Mike, myself, Kelly and Jeff, just to talk about where the committee might be looking. And so more information coming to us at a later date on that. Um, the, uh, Landscape Review Committee, again, you, I've shared how much I enjoy that. I'm learning my, my bushes and shrubs. But more importantly, it keeps me, uh, aware of all the projects that are going on in, in, in the community. And it's been a, it's a, it's a very longstanding committee. It brings a lot of, uh, of expertise to the table, but also knowing that anytime we take a tree down in the public right away from the curb to the sidewalk, that has to be replaced. Anytime we take, uh, shrubbery or trees out, we need to replace those. Um, I also am, uh, involved with the Yamhill Emergency Community, uh, Community, Emergency Preparation Group or Management Group. We meet this Thursday. Uh, we have an individual tree wilder that's coming in from the, uh, Weather, uh, National Weather Group, talking about winter preparedness from a weather's perspective. Um, and then just an update on McMinnville Water and Light. We're in the process of interviewing for General Manager. And, uh, hopefully by the end of this week, we will have, uh, a candidate, uh, uh, for General Manager. Uh, other things that we're working on right now is we're in negotiations with the City of Lafayette to provide, um, water to them. And I think we've got an, uh, an initial letter of understanding out with the mayor. And the city council has approved that for providing water to Lafayette. Um, so some good things happening from that perspective. No, we would, we'd be doing a, a connection up, uh, from, uh, from the watershed. So, uh, a lot of things happening from that perspective. We're, we're perfecting our, uh, land for a pumping station out of the Willamette River. We have the ability to take 5 million gallons a day out of that. And we're looking at perfecting that right now and bringing that forward. Uh, would, in the long run, be looking at a regional water distribution center for the cities that would want to participate with us. But they would have to buy into output of that, uh, to help offset some of the costs that we would be going through. Those are, we purchased that from the International Paper, um, uh, fat, uh, unit that was down by Albany. They, yeah, we bought that for millions and millions of dollars, but we've got senior water rights that, uh, we have 20 years to perfect, meaning to pull that out and start using that. And so we're, we're looking down that. So we'll, we'll have a redundant system outside of the watershed of, uh, 5 million, uh, gallons a day at some point.
Isn't there some kind of reciprocal agreement between us and the other cities too, like Lafayette, for their water sources for us?
Yeah, when we get this all squared away, there will be a sharing of, 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 of output. And again, we, we're looking at output, not outright owning capacity, but just output. And so, yes, there'll be some opportunities there. Okay, uh, department heads. Matt?
Hey, good evening. I haven't been here for a couple, uh, sessions, so, uh, bear with me. I've repeated myself, uh, on this one. Uh, we did promote Rhonda Sandoval to, uh, the position of captain. Uh, so she's off and running, doing an excellent job. A little bit on the hiring updates, uh, we just graduated two from the Police Academy on Friday. Uh, so they're going to start essentially probably a three-month run of training internally. Uh, we put an unconditional job offer out to one of our park rangers today for a full-time position. Uh, his name's Elijah Corio, uh, so that's good news. Um, and on the 30th of October, so on Monday, we're hosting another Coffee with a Cop at Union Box. So anybody that wants to come and talk to your local law enforcement will be down there, um, for a couple hours, beginning, I think, at 10 o'clock. Uh, we've got a heavy lift tomorrow. We've got, I think you probably all know, we've got, uh, uh, U.S. Secretary of Ed coming in. Uh, Betsy DeVos should be in. And, uh, a couple of days of planning, that's all we get. So, uh, it's been a tremendous amount of work, uh, for, uh, our department. And, uh, but I think we're lined up, ready to go with our partners locally. And then federally, we've met with them as well. Uh, Counselor Garvin mentioned Downtown Safety Task Force. Susan and I have met. Uh, we've got, uh, emails out to those that have been identified on that committee. And that CAT Task Force, I would, uh, hopefully at the end of the week, if I get everybody's emails back, uh, we'll set a meeting date, time, and, uh, we'll move forward. Susan and I have got some, uh, preliminary information gathered. And, uh, I've reached out to our respective, my, my listserv about some ideas and...
my listserv, about some ideas and moving forward, but so that getting ramped up is a big feat, so those that are on the Housing and Homeless Subcommittees, I feel your pain. It's like, it's a lot of work, I can imagine, and this will be a lot of work as well. So that being said, that's what's going on. The PD, very busy.
Thank you, Chief. And if you could include me on those emails, because although I'm not going to be a part of the committee, I'd like to, I'd like to be a part of that, sitting at the, not at the table, but next to the wall.
You bet.
Like I'd like to. Susan?
I brought a quick fun fact from the Parks and Rec Department tonight. As you all know, we have had showers at the community center for many, many years, and in December of 2015, we started a shower voucher program there with Give a Little Foundation and our partners at Yamhill County Health and Human Services. And I was recently emailing Councilor Drapkin about the numbers of showers that we have given out there, and it's a place where people can have a clean and safe shower in our community. And Councilor Drapkin, I owe you an apology because the number I gave you is incorrect. We actually found out that we logged the information in two different locations, and so I had given you the number of 600 showers from January to July of this year. In fact, it's 1,600 showers from January to August of this year out of the community center, so a lot higher number than we had originally thought there.
That's an epitome of good and bad news.
Thank you, Susan. Marcia?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Just to share one project that we're working on right now and actually launching with some of Matt's guys out in the cars, we're starting to implement something called two-factor implementation around the city, which is a fancy way to say when you log into an important resource from a remote location, the two factors you need to have are something you know, the password, and something you have. So when people are on a tablet in a police car and they are accessing police resources, you know, data verb, the information they get from the FBI, they can't get away with just logging in with a password anymore, and it'll actually, we'll send a code out to their phone now or make a phone call, give them the code. So basically, they have to type something in when they're remoting in, and that's going to spread throughout the city more and more as we have more and more remote users going out there. It's just another huge layer we can put up in security for external users, and it's only required for law enforcement in terms of audit right now, but looking down the path, it's going to be required for everybody pretty soon, so we're getting ahead of that curve.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Heather?
Yeah, so I just wanted to let the City Council know, we sent out an RFP for some historic preservation work based on a grant that we received. We've selected, we got some good responses and selected a consultant that's well-known throughout the state of Oregon for doing national registered district surveys and historic preservation plans. We're going to be doing a survey and historic preservation plan with that work, so that should launch here fairly soon, and we'll be doing a community-wide effort with that. We're also currently applying for a grant with the Department of Land Conservation and Development to see if we can get some funds to help us fund a billable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. That's a much-needed planning document here at the City of McMinnville. The last one we did was in 2001. They're supposed to be updated every five years and really are the foundation for any sort of long-term planning, and is one of the actions in the Affordable Housing Task Force Action Plan. So fingers crossed, hopefully we're a strong candidate for that.
Thank you, Heather. Mike? Melissa? David? Jeff?
Mayor members of the City Council, briefly, I'll be out of town October 19th through 25th, attending the International City Managers Association Conference and completing my three-year term on the Executive Board by attending my final board meeting for my three-year term. That means I will miss your October 24th council meeting, and while I will be here in spirit, it's important to have this chair inhabited physically, and so Mr. Bissett has agreed to sit in this chair at that meeting. You remember that, right, Mike?
And all the assignments that go with it.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for your participation this evening. We close our council meeting. Thank you.